Good evening. This, the 80th meeting of the 71st term of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. I want to ask those who have cell phones to please turn them off or put them on vibrate. Tonight's invocation will be led by Pastor Mark Parker of the Breath of God Lutheran Church. After the invocation, please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Lord God, even in the midst of this winter, in this cold and this weather, we give you thanks for the opportunity to serve your people in this great city. Help us to remember always those who look to us for guidance and for leadership, those who hold us to account for the high offices in which we serve. Help us as colleagues to lift each other up and encourage each other in our dedication to service. Help us as leaders in this city and of this government to always look for the people beneath us, for the people around us, for the people who form our communities, that we would be putting them as our first and highest priority. Watch over especially those tonight who are cold and lonely on streets or in abandoned buildings or wherever they may find shelter, that they would be reached by those doing the homeless point in time count, that they would receive the services from our city and our churches and our private sectors and our other nonprofits, that they would know the comfort of your presence even in the midst of their desperation. We pray this as always. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pastor Mark. Thank you. The clerk, the clerk will call the roll of the members.
President Young, Kraft, Scott, Kern, Henry Specter, Middleton Mosby, Holton, Welsh, Reissinger, Costello, Stokes, Branch Clark.
It is the council's custom to generalize the invocation. I ask for a motion to generalize the prayer. Motion by Councilman Kraft. Second by Councilman Scott. All those in favor of generalizing the prayer say aye. All those opposed nay. The ayes have the motion as adopted. We'll now proceed with the adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the general of the proceedings from the January 12 City Council meeting is on the council member's desk.
Is there a motion to approve the journal? Motion by Councilman Kern, second by Council Vice President Reissinger. All those in favor of adopting the journal say aye. Those opposed nay. The motion currently the journal is adopted. Bill signed by the mayor can be found on page two to three of the agenda. Bills will be introduced.
City Council Bill 15-0474, Waterfront Management District and Waterfront Management Authority, renewal through April 23, 2019. Mayor and City Council Resolution for the Purpose of Renewing and Continuing the Waterfront Management District and Waterfront Management Authority, Providing for a Special Effective Date and Generally Relating to the Activities and Authority of the Waterfront Management District and Waterfront Management Authority. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Urban Affairs and Agent Committee.
City Council Bill 15-0475, Drug Paraphernalia and Smoking Aids Commercial Display to Minors. Ordinance for the Purpose of Prohibiting the Commercial Display of Certain Drug Paraphernalia and Smoking Aids to Minors, Defining a Certain Term, Clarifying Conforming Related Provisions and Generally Relating to Drug Paraphernalia and Smoking Aids. Sponsored Middleton, President Young, Kraft, Branch, Costello, Holton, Stokes, Henry, Reissinger, Clark, and Scott.
Please note Councilman Kern, Councilman Welch, and Councilman Mosby as co-sponsors. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you all of my colleagues for signing on to, I guess, updating and improving a bill that's already in place. And basically, it's the definition of the types of paraphernalia that needed to be updated. I passed around a picture. This came about, I took a tour in some of the businesses in my district, which is not a whole lot, but the most popular one, I guess, really, that a lot of people are familiar with is the one in the 5100 block, Park Heights Avenue, where we, I have five liquor establishments, and there's also like six or seven convenience stores, and it's a lot of movement, and it has always been movement and drug activity and so on, just within that block. And we all have these little areas, or at least one area like that in my district. And, you know, I take a stop and I go into all of the establishments, the liquor establishments, all of the stores, the food chains, and I was taken back, I noticed, right within that block, at least six or seven of the convenience stores, right in the window, as you're walking down the sidewalk, they have, the windows are packed with drug paraphernalia, rolling paper, pipes, cigarettes, advertising condoms, and then mixed in, they have little girls' earrings, they have chocolate candy, just putting, you know, a minor walking down, a young child walking down the street and noticing that, there's a bus stop in that area. There, I just want to update and improve the legislation that's already in place, that, you know, this does not stop a person from selling that paraphernalia, but it, they don't need to put it in the window. Even if you walk in, and of course, some of these places are behind plexiglass, they have, they tape these things on the plexiglass, so it's showing a lack of actually communicating, and, you know, and it's like competition between the convenience stores and selling these products. So, you know, these areas need to be cleaned up. I think it's an opportune time, we, I want to thank Councilman Kraft for putting in the sex trafficking bill, Bill Henry with, you know, updating and helping with the abandoned property bill, because there's also some abandoned businesses right within this block. So, I thank all my council members for signing on, and again, I want to say, this does not stop the sale of it, but it does help and protect the health and welfare of our young children that pass through those blocks, and they shouldn't be exposed because they think that this is, you know, the norm. So, again, thank you all for signing on.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Health Committee.
City Council Bill 15-0476, Zoning Conditional Use Conversion of a One Family Dwelling Unit to a Two Family Dwelling Unit in the R7 zoning district, 2515 Brookfield Avenue. Ordinance for the Purpose of Permitting Subject to Certain Conditions, the Conversion of a One Family Dwelling Unit to a Two Family Dwelling Unit in the R7 zoning district on the property known as 2515 Brookfield Avenue, as outlined in Red and accompanying plat. Sponsored Mosby.
This has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee. Resolution to be introduced.
City Council Resolution 15-0201R, congratulating William Driscoll on his retirement from Baltimore City Government. Resolution for the Purpose of Celebrating the Laudable Career of William Driscoll, thanking him for his unwavering commitment to public service upon his retirement from Baltimore City Government, and wishing him many years of continued happiness as he spends more time with his wife, daughters, and grandchildren. Sponsored President Young, Kraft, Branch, Costello, Holton, Stokes, Henry, Middleton, Reissinger, Specter, Clark, Scott.
Please note that Councilman Welch is a co-sponsor. You have to wait, Bobby, you're a co-sponsor. Councilman Kern is a co-sponsor. This evening, and Councilman Mosby, this evening marks the final council meeting for my Chief of Staff, William "Bill" Driscoll, before his retirement. Bill has worked for the city of Baltimore for nearly thirty, for nearly forty years, and he has shown tireless enthusiasm for serving Baltimore City. He has shown the highest standard of public service, and he will be missed as he leaves us to spend more time with his wife, daughters, and grandchildren. Thank you, Bill, for your contribution, not only to my office, but the entirety of Baltimore City over your 39 years' career. And on a personal note, I'm gonna miss those little fights we have. When you ask me to do something, I say, no, I don't want to do it, and I'll say no, and you'll come back through the other door, and it's a yes. I'm gonna miss those. But I want you to enjoy your retirement with your wife and your family, and always remember that you can always, this is home for you. You're always welcome back here, as long as I'm in office. This is a part of your family, so you're welcome back at any time. Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Kern.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wonder if I was gonna sign on to this, I don't know if it would have meant anything, but maybe if I didn't sign on, I would vote against it, and he wouldn't be able to retire and make a move in here to reconsider. I know I speak for the former Councilman Kern, Mike, and for my dad, I believe you knew when you first started off, working in the vineyards, as Mike used to say, at the polls, and working for the organizations, political organizations up in northeast Baltimore. I've known Bill for many years, and I worked with him when he was staff to, Council Services staffed to committees. We had a lot of fun with then Chairman DeDamo, as the budget chair, in those days, it'd only be one, it would just be me, you, and Nick hearing all the stuff of medals, and we would tie Nick up in knots on occasions and have a little fun with him. But, Bill, I'm gonna miss you very much. On a personal note, you know a lot of folks up northeast Baltimore, a lot of our friends, and some recently have passed away. We knew a lot of folks together, and it's a nice tribute here to you to do. I hope things go well for you in retirement, and maybe you'll come back on contract, Mr. President, sometimes these folks do this. But, working with Bill as a, as Chair of the Policy and Planning Committee, whatever committees I had when you were of Council Services, it was an honor to work with you. You're very diligent in your job as Council Services. I know the Council President, know that you've done a wonderful job as Chief of Staff, and I'm gonna miss you as the time moves on. You're gonna, you're always a real fun guy, and a lot of times, if you don't have fun when you come to work, any job you have, sometimes you dread coming to work, but working with Bill Driscoll was always an honor and a pleasure for this councilman. And I know I speak for Mike too, over the years that Mike served in this body, Bill, and we're gonna miss you, and congratulations.
Thank you. Councilwoman Specter.
Matter of fact, I've never seen Bill angry since he's been working for me, and I know he had every right to be. Chair recognizes Councilman Henry.
Well, I was gonna start with, oh, Mr. President, I have seen Bill angry.
I haven't seen.
But then I, but then I realized I hadn't, I had to go back and review whether or not that was since he'd been working for you, 'cause I've got 23 or 24 years of different snapshots in my head of Bill in a variety of situations, both inside and outside of this building, and there have, there is a temper in there, there is a temper in there, but I will say that one of the things that has made Bill the absolutely amazingly incredible public servant that he has been for his career is his ability to control that temper, at times when no normal human being you would think would put up with what he's putting up with. And I can't say in mere words how much I have enjoyed and respected the relationship we have had over that time, and I hope it will continue, even if it means that I'm seeing him less often, and now he has to actually call me Bill instead of Will. And let me take this moment to say that when I got here in October of 1991, there were two people in this building who wouldn't call me Bill, and they were Bill Driscoll and Bill the Guard, Bill Fernandez, up on the fifth floor. And they both independently called me Will, without being around each other, they both called me Will, and it took me a while to realize I couldn't possibly be Bill, because they were Bill. There we go. So, they, on their own, they came, they, whoa, we gotta call this guy something else. So, they both called me Will, and they, to this day, they both call me Will. And my hope is that now that there's not the pressure of city government on you, that you can break that down, we can both be Bill. We can both be Bill going forward. Thank you, Bill.
Chair recognizes Councilman Mosby.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. Bill, I stand today just thanking you for who you are. Your heart pumps, the city of Baltimore, that's just not evident by your longstanding career with the city, but the way you live your life on a daily basis. When I came onto the council, you was always very helpful for me, you've always been a huge resource for me, and you've always showed me a great deal of how to conduct business in a professional manner and keep a solid temperament. So, you will truly be missed on this council. Like the President said, this is your home, please don't hesitate to come back, and I just thank you, and I have a huge amount of respect for you, Bill. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Councilman, oh, Councilwoman Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to congratulate you, Bill, with all the years of service that you've given to this wonderful city. And Bill has put the M in multitasking. I first met Bill when he worked for the Department of Transportation, and he was just, he was very effective. It was, you know, I had just started, and he just taught me new things through transportation and just was there with answers to just any, anything I asked, so I appreciate that, appreciate your help. Bill is also an avid reader, so he, you know, has booked lots of books that he shares, and he has shared a few with me and my sister that we appreciate. So, on her behalf as well, she has been retired now for a couple of years, and has started reading, and Bill has shared some of the books that he enjoyed, so thank you and enjoy your retirement. I'm sure there's other things that's gonna keep you busy, you just don't seem like a person that's just, that's just gonna sit still, so take care.
Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm the newest person here, I've only been here for three months and 20 days, there's no guidebook or manual for how to do this job. Everyone in this room has been incredibly helpful and kind and lending their time and advice to me, but none more so than Bill Driscoll. I really appreciate it, I'm honored to call you a friend, and please don't be a stranger.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Holton.
Thank you, Mr. President. Belly Dee, it's gonna be a different day in City Hall with you not here. You've been here since I came, and twice as long, and so I wish you all the best, and that you're young enough to appreciate life beyond these walls, and remember us. You don't have to come and see us, 'cause at least not in the first year, you need to go ahead and let your life, let your life outside of here know you really have retired. But I do wish you all the best that life has to offer and to enjoy it, and think about us from time to time. Best wishes.
Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, Bill and I have been friends and buddies for quite a while, since our daughters both attended the Institute of Notre Dame together, and we served on the Foreigners Club and other projects. I think he showed up on Saturdays and painted, I showed up on Saturdays at lunchtime. I think it all worked out well. So, just to give my well wishes to you also, Bill, I know your GPS is gonna keep bringing you back, your car's gonna keep coming back to City Hall for a few weeks, but it'll break the habit, I'm certain. And so, again, as everyone else has already said, you've been a great strength here in City Hall, and we've appreciated you throughout the years, and thank you so much.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Clark.
Mr. President, members, when our president was first elected by this membership, and he then soon after announced that Bill Driscoll was coming across the street to be his Chief of Staff, I remember thinking to myself at that moment, this might work. It's a nice balance, a very, a very dynamic, energetic, hmm, forceful president, and a very, been around this city a long time, I can handle it, but I'm not gonna have a nervous breakdown about it, let's calm down, I can help, Bill Driscoll. It was a good balance, and it has been a good balance, and it's been great for us out here in the City Council, because what, if the president's having a dynamic day, we can duck around the corner and stick our head in Bill Driscoll's office and say, am I still alive? Oh, yeah, it'll be fine, and that's how it works. So, we're gonna miss you for more reasons than one, and, but we know that your successor is very much in the vein of your tradition and legacy. She knows how to be calm, and we know she knows how to get that work done. So, thank you both for being just the right people for our wonderful president and us. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Branch.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have 23 and a half years with city government, and then the remaining seven years elected to this office. I remember when I was here, when public works consist of four bureaus, and I've met Bill way back then, and all I can say to him is, job well done. Thank you, Bill, thank you for everything.
Chair recognizes Councilman Welch.
Thank you, Mr. President. The place is not gonna look the same without you. I can't remember not knowing you. You're not just a fixture, but you're a very knowledgeable person, and you impart that knowledge in such a balanced and wonderful way, it doesn't make you feel dumb. And even when you carry the president's messages, I feel hopeful when I hear what you have to say, and I consider things that I didn't consider before because of the way that you deliver that message, and the extreme knowledge that you have, the background that you have on the legislative portions of what we do. So, God knows, we're gonna miss you, I know I'm gonna miss you, but my office is always open, we have water in my office now, you're always welcome to a glass of water in my office, but God knows, you're just a wonderful human being, and you're just a wonderful resource. God bless what you do from this point on. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Councilman Kraft.
Thank you, Mr. President. Bill, I don't know whether I'm like at the beginning, the end, the middle, one third, when I figure out how long all these people have known you, I guess I'm about 25% of Ricky, maybe at 10 times as much as Eric. Okay. Anyway, when you, be quiet, Will. And when you, when you get an opportunity to work with folks on a daily basis, you really see just who they are, and it's not about how smart they are, or whether they show up for work, or, you know, whether they pay attention, but you really get to see who they are, what they care about, what's important to them, you know, what their values are. And we come across a lot of people in government every day when we do that, and, you know, while lots of people are good, and lots of people are nice, there are people that really do stand out, and they're really people that you look at them and you say, this is a person that whether I'm here or whether I'm somewhere else, whether they're in this job or they're not in this job, this is a person that I'd like to keep in my life and have in my life, and I'd like to say that about Bill Driscoll. It's been great having you in my life, and I hope you're in my life in the future. Good luck, Bill.
Chair recognizes Council Vice President Reissinger.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say, Bill, how's it feel to be toasted tonight? The 20 years I've known you on the council, I've never seen you mayor go upset, you're always level-headed, you always had an open-door dialogue, and you will be missed, and good luck on your retirement. And, Mr. President, I move to suspend the appropriate rules so that the council can immediately adopt this resolution.
Second by Councilman, Councilwoman Specter, all those in favor of suspended rules for immediate adoption of this resolution, say aye. Those opposed nay. The motion currently rules are suspended. Chair recognizes Council Vice President Reissinger.
Mr. President, I move the resolution favorable.
Second by Councilwoman Specter, all those in favor of adopting Resolution 15-0201R, say aye. Those opposed nay. The motion currently, and this resolution is adopted. You can find the consent counter in Section A, at the back of the agenda is their motion to approve the consent counter. Motion by Councilman Kraft, second by Councilwoman Middleton, all those in favor of approving the consent counter, say aye. Those opposed nay. The motion currently this counter is approved. We'll now move the bills on second reader. Executive appointments.
EA 14-0257, Dr. Leanne Aswin, Commissioner of Baltimore City Health Department, District One.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Welch.
Mr. President, the committee held a hearing on Wednesday, January 24th, 21st, and I moved the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Kraft, all those in favor of confirming this nominee, say aye. Those opposed nay. This nomination is confirmed.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Dr. Win, she's here, right? Can you stand? Chair recognizes Councilwoman Specter. Is she on?
Yeah, she might need to use someone else's mic.
Use somebody else's mic, 'cause I've been trying to get them to fix our mic system for almost two years.
Is it on? Is it on?
Is it on? Yeah, it's on now.
I hope mine'll get on someday. Mr. President, members of the council, I wasn't able to attend, even though I'm on the committee, Mr. President, but we're fortunate enough to have Dr. Leanne Wen here today, and I hope that you will invite her at her convenience and your convenience to give us a briefing on this issue about measles, that a lot of people are failing to follow the inoculation 'cause they think there's a connection to autism, and now it's almost of an epidemic, we even have a baby, a case in Maryland. So, I hope that your office will arrange a committee of the whole where we can get an explanation so that we can get that word out to our constituents, especially our school-age children and our preschool.
Okay. What I'll do, Councilwoman Specter, I ask Councilman Kern in the Health Committee to convene an informational hearing, where she can come in and tell us what we're doing about the measles epidemic. All right, Health Committee.
City Council Resolution 14-0194, our informational hearing, non-therapeutic use of antibiotics and livestock. Ordinance for the Purpose of Requesting a Statewide and National Ban on Non-Therapeutic Uses of Antibiotics and Livestock Production, Supporting the enactment of the Protection of Antibiotics for Medical Treatment Act, Prevention of Antibiotics Resistance Acts to address this dangerous practice, and calling on a hearing, calling for a hearing to discuss ways to reduce and eliminate the non-therapeutic uses of antibiotics and livestock production.
Chair recognizes Councilman Kern.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee heard, Health Committee heard this resolution on December 16th. We received a great deal of information on this important matter, and there will be a hearing on additional legislation that will be introduced in the future, but at this time, I want to recognize the sponsor of the resolution, Mr. President, to ask the councilmen from the 7th District for comments.
Thank you, Committee Chair, Mr. President and colleagues. Yes, this is about non-therapeutic use of antibiotics and livestock. As Councilman Kern stated, it was a very informative hearing. We had subject matter experts from George Washington University, as well as from Johns Hopkins, as well as the Food and Water Watch Committee here in Baltimore, that was able to present the byproducts and impacts of the overuse of antibiotics and livestock. What I'm excited about is, this is gonna go up into the federal government, it's a non-binding resolution, but it shows that the folks around this country are serious about our health as it relates to some of the things that are going on with our food, and I'm here to also announce that Baltimore is the 50th city to sign on with a resolution such as this. And if I could just mention Ms. Stephanie Compton here from Food and Water Watch, who ultimately brought this piece of legislation to myself. I think that this piece of legislation shows the importance of having engaged citizenry as it relates to coming to their representatives, showing an issue, talking about an issue, and I thank you for bringing this to my attention. I know that I was really educated, and I'm sure my colleague would agree to that, and that we continue to push forward as it relates to protecting our future sustainable environment for all. Thank you.
Thank you.
The President, since that hearing, I've been a vegetarian. Not quite, but I was...
I was gonna say, not quite.
I don't eat, I don't eat meat anymore, but I don't eat it any less either, so, but it was very informative. But it was very informative at the hearing, and I'm glad that the Baltimore City Council is joining those other municipalities out of this country on this issue. And with that, Mr. President, I move City Council Resolution thirteen...fourteen? I'm sorry. Thirteen...fourteen dash zero-one-nine-for-R, favorable from the Health Committee.
Second by Councilman Mosby. All those in favor of approving this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. This resolution is adopted. Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council fourteen dash zero-four-three-four, zoning conditional use, amending ordinance zero-six dash three-five-three. Ordinance for the purpose of amending ordinance zero-six dash three-five-three, which authorize the establishment, maintenance, and operation of a convalescent nursing and rest home on the property known as three-six-one-seven-through-one-nine-seven mile lane, to increase the maximum number of residents allowed.
Chair of the House, Council Vice President, Ry Sanger.
Mr. President, the amendment's on my colleague's desk. I move the amendment.
Second by Councilwoman Specter, this is in Councilwoman Specter's district. All those in favor of approving the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. The amendments are adopted. Chair of the House, Council Vice President, Ry Sanger.
Mr. President, I move the bill favorable with amended.
Second by Councilwoman Specter. All those in favor of approving the bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader. Chair of the House, Councilman Kern.
Mr. President, I make a motion that for the rest of the agenda, that we read the short titles.
Second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor of short titles, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion is carried. Chair of the House, Councilwoman Specter.
Can you get Kern's mic?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. I just wanna give kudos to Chairman Ry Sanger and to Councilmember Jim Craft, and especially to Jennifer Coats. This has gotten very complicated over time, and would have really been held up unnecessarily, except for their intervention, and I appreciate it, and I know that my constituents do. Thank you very much for a great job.
City Council fourteen dash zero-four-six-two, Guilford RPP, area amendment.
Chair of the House, Council Vice President, Ry Sanger.
Mr. President, I move the bill favorable.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader. Chair of the House, Council Vice President, Ry Sanger.
Mr. President, I move to invoke Council Rule twelve dash one, to move City Council Bill fourteen dash zero-four-six-two to third reader on the same night. Thank you.
Second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor of moving City Council Bill fourteen dash oh-four-six-two from second to third reader on the same night, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have the motion carried, and Council Bill fourteen dash oh-four-six-two will be voted on when we get to the third reader portion of the agenda.
City Council Resolution fourteen dash zero-one-nine-seven-R, request for state action on street parking flexibility.
Chair of the House, Council Vice President, Ry Sanger.
Mr. President, there were amendments to this bill. I move the bill favorable.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of approving this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. This resolution is approved. Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council fourteen dash zero-four-six-five, Community Legacy Project Application, Govins Ecumenical Development Corporation.
Chair of the House, Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. On this particular bill, the Getco, the Govins Ecumenical, sorry, Development Corporation is applying for funding on a program administered by the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development called the Community Legacy Project. Approval of the Council Bill fourteen dash zero-four-six-five would indicate the city's support of Getco's application, which would qualify Getco for a grant from the state of up to $350,000. The committee reports the bill out favorably.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of approving this mayor and city council resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. This resolution moves to third reader.
City Council Resolution fourteen dash zero-one-nine-two-R, investigative hearing, Charm City Circulator.
Chair of the House, Councilman Stokes.
Yes, Mr. President, the committee did hear this particular bill. The circulator is expected to produce a deficit of $73.2 million over the next ten years. It's already...has a deficit of some $10 to $12 million. Department of Finance conducted a financial analysis to determine sustainability of the current operations of the circulator, and has published that analysis, which is on the Department of Finance website. We will be coming back to look at the recommendations and next action steps at later hearings, but the committee did move this bill favorably, according to what we heard.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of approving this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. This resolution is approved.
City Council Resolution fourteen dash zero-one-nine-six-R, investigative hearing, status of charter, required agency audits.
Chair of the House, Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President, again...not again, but on this particular update, we heard from the Department of Finance that there will be five audits this year of the Department of Finance, Department of Recreation and Parks, Baltimore Police Department, Department of Public Works, and Department of Transportation. Those audits are tentatively scheduled to be completed by June 2015. There will be another four done between June and the end of the year, and then the rest of the audits will be completed by June of 2015. They will, meaning the auditors, which are all independent outside of the city's agencies, except that the controller will be auditing the finance department. Those audits will be financial and performance in scope, and we will be doing updates on a quarterly basis on those, on the progress of those particular audits also. It was all in all a very good hearing, and the committee moves favorably on that.
Second by Councilman Costello. All those in favor of approving this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. This resolution is adopted. Third reader requiring Rule twelve dash one for same-day advancements.
City Council fourteen dash zero-four-six-two, Guilford RPP, area amendment. President Young, Craft, Scott, Kern, Henry, Middleton, Mosby, Holton, Welsh, Ry Sanger, Costello, Stokes, Branch, Clark.
This bill is approved. Third reader for final passage.
City Council fourteen dash zero-four-two-eight, rezoning a portion of two-zero-five-one-South Hanover Street. President Young, Craft, Scott, Kern, Henry, Middleton, Mosby, Holton, Welsh, Ry Sanger, Costello, Stokes, Branch, Clark.
Specter.
President Young, Craft, Scott, Kern, Henry, Specter, Middleton, Mosby, Holton, Welsh, Ry Sanger, Costello, Stokes, Branch.
This bill is approved. Clearing out the bill status. The list of bills cleared can be found on Page seven of the agenda. Committee announcements. Chair of the House, Councilman Craft.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, the Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee will conduct a work session on Council Bill fourteen oh-four-six-four, Hotels, Human Trafficking Prevention, on Friday, February sixth, 2015, from 10:00 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. here in the council chambers. The Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee will conduct a hearing on Council Bill fourteen oh-four-four-eight, Natural Resources, Soil Erosion and Settlement Control, delegation of hearing authority, on Tuesday, February tenth, 2015, at 9:25 a.m. here in the council chambers. The Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee will hear Council Bill twelve oh-one-one-four, Charter Amendment Term Limits, on Tuesday, February tenth, 2015, at 9:30 a.m. here in the council chambers. The Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee will hear Council Resolution fifteen oh-two-oh-oh-R, an investigative hearing on the valet parking program, on Wednesday, February twenty-fifth, 2015, here in the council chambers. This will be televised on Charm TV Baltimore Channel twenty-five. The Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee will conduct a hearing on Tuesday, March seventeenth, 2015, at 10:00 a.m. here in the council chambers, on Council Bill fourteen oh-four-six-four, Hotels, Human Trafficking Prevention. That is a rescheduled hearing date. And, Mr. President, for correction, the work session on the human trafficking bill is actually being held in the Reeves Room, so that will be on Friday, February the sixth, at 10:00 a.m. here in the Reeves Room. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Chair of the House, Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. On Wednesday, February eleventh, at 4:30 p.m. here in the chambers, the Housing and Community Development Committee will have a hearing on City Council Bill fourteen dash zero-four-five-zero, closing of Creek Alley. And then at 5:00, the same day, February eleventh, the committee will have a work session on City Council fourteen dash zero-one-nine-nine-R, which is an informational hearing, HABC participation in the Federal Rental Assistance Demonstration Project.
Committee announcements. Committee announcement. Chair of the House, Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Taxation, Finance, Economic Development will hear Council Bill fourteen dash zero-four-five-one on Thursday, February fifth, 10:00 a.m. here in chambers. It is for the purpose of authorizing the mayor and city council of Baltimore to sell the public or private sale, all is in interest, in a certain parcel of land, known as the former bed of Creek Alley extending from West Street northeasterly, 330 feet, more or less, to West Cross Street, and no longer needed for public use and provided for a special effective date. In addition, Taxation, Finance, Economic Development will hear City Council Bill fourteen dash zero-four-five-eight, February fifth, 10...15 a.m. here in chambers, which is an easement of 414 Light Street, for the purpose of authorizing the mayor and city council to release an easement pertaining to a certain property known as 414 Light Street. That's the old McCormick site. Easement being no longer needed for public use and provided for a special effective date. And finally, Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development will hear City Council Bill fourteen dash four-five-seven on Thursday, February fifth, at 10:30 a.m. here in chambers. It's for the purpose of clarifying certain reemployment rules for Class D members of the employees' retirement system, characterizing the retirement savings plan more specifically, changing the composition of the plans' board of trustees, providing that members may elect to invest non-invested employer contributions in certain investment funds, clarifying the plans' matching contribution formula, providing a certain rule for certain planned death benefits, providing for a special effective date, and generally relating to the employees' retirement system and the retirement savings plan. Thank you, Mr. President.
Committee announcement. Chair of the House, Councilwoman Clark.
Mr. President, members of the council, the Education and Youth Committee will hold a hearing on Bill number thirteen dash oh-one-three-oh-R on Thursday, February fifth, at 4:00 in the afternoon in these very chambers. The legislation in question is sponsored by the president and many of our members, promoting educational success through a continued partnership and oversight. And the oversight proposed by this resolution is for this council and this president to call in some of our partners in state government, including the Interagency Committee, which oversees the funding of capital school projects, and other notables from the state, to see how we're doing, and how they're doing, and how our partnership is proceeding to rebuild and renovate the school buildings in Baltimore City. So, I hope you'll all find time to attend. I think it's an important hearing.
Committee announcement. Chair of the House, Council Vice President, Ry Sanger. Any more committee announcements?
Mr. President, the Land Use and Transportation Committee will hold work sessions on City Council Bill twelve dash zero-one-five-two, which is Transform Baltimore. Those dates and times are Tuesday, January twenty-seventh, at 11:30 a.m. That's Title Fourteen. Tuesday, February third, at 3:00 p.m., Title Fifteen. Wednesday, February eleventh, at 2:00 p.m., Title Sixteen. And Wednesday, February eighteenth, at 5:00 p.m., is Title Seventeen. All in the council chambers, Mr. President. The committee will also hold a hearing on Bill fourteen dash zero-four-six-six, Wednesday, February eighteenth, at 1:00 p.m. in the council chambers. This is rezoning at twelve zero-nine North Road Street. The committee will hold a hearing on Bill thirteen dash zero-two-seven-two on Wednesday, February eighteenth, at 1:05 p.m. in the council chambers. This is a zoning. It's a conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to a 23-family dwelling unit in the R seven zoning district, and the variance is located at twelve zero-nine North Road Street. The committee will also have a hearing on Bill twelve dash zero-one-seven-zero, Wednesday, February twenty-fifth, 1:00 p.m. in the council chambers. This is wireless telecommunication antennas prohibited contracts. The committee will also hold a hearing on Bill fifteen dash zero-four-seven-zero, Wednesday, February twenty-fifth, at 1:10 p.m. This is a zoning, conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to a 15-family dwelling unit in the R seven zoning district located at thirty-one-ten Crittenon Place. The committee will also hold a hearing on Bill fourteen dash zero-three-nine-three, Wednesday, February twenty-fifth, at 1:20 p.m. in the council chambers. This is a rezoning located at 2700 Raynor Avenue. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Now, we're on regular announcements. First of all, I'd like to let all the council people know that we're all here, and we're gonna take the council photo that we've been trying to get done for a couple weeks. So, we ask you to please stay and don't leave out right away. Yeah, Emily is right up there, and she's gonna take the picture from up there. Effective Monday, February the second, most of you know that Carolyn Blakeney is the new chief of staff for my office. And Carolyn have a long career as well, serving under Mayor Sheila Dixon, and probably that under our colleague Melvin Stooks. You know, working together works, is what he always say. So, I'm happy to have Carolyn to step in for Bill. And like I said, we're gonna really miss you, Bill, but I know that I can call you, Carolyn can call you, if we have anything we wanna discuss with you. Just keep your...you can't keep your city phone, but keep the number. Just joking, Bill. Also, that's it. Yeah, that's it. Okay. Regular announcements. Chair of the House, Council Vice President, Ry Sanger. Oh, you have the announcement?
I would just like to add to the moment of silence, Rufus Thompson Jr., which is the father of Rufus Thomas III, which is, was a president in Northwest Garwin Oaks Association for a long time, and his sister is Bunny Sims, which is an avid gardener, president of the Northwest Gardening Association, the only African-American gardening association in the city.
Okay.
So, a moment of silence for Rufus Thompson Jr.
And also, former delegate Sean Turant is having an exhibit of our former delegate Tony Fulton. His memorabilia's in the back, and I'm asking everybody to just stop back there and just take a look and support what delegate Turant has done by making his posters and everything available to us. So, Sean, thank you, and thank you for being here, City Hall. Chair of the House, Vice President, Ry Sanger.
Mr. President, members of the council, the next meeting of the city council will be held on Monday, February twen...February the second, at 5:00 p.m. in the council chambers, and I ask for a moment of silence for Rufus Thompson Jr.
Thank you. There being no further business, this concludes the eightieth meeting of the suddenly first term of the Baltimore City Council. Good night.